Okay. Good evening. I'm Naomi Miller, Chair of the Shaftesbury Select Board. I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Shaftesbury Select Board on June 16, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Cole Hall. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda?
No.
No.
No. Okay. First item is minutes, and we don't have the requisite personnel to do the minutes from June 2nd, but we do have the minutes from June 9th. And can I have a motion to approve?
All, motion to approve the June 9th minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tony. Any comments on these minutes? Any amendments?
None for me.
I had one, which was actually in all of them, so I think it's just a thing. It says that Ms. Miller made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Kulikowski moved. What I do is I ask for a motion.
Right.
And I think it's just confusing. Yeah, it's on the others as well. Everybody okay with that change?
Yeah.
All in favor of adopting these minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Great. There we go. Announcements. None for you? Paul, I think you have some announcements?
I do. An update on the new building. I had said before the floors have been ripped up, all the linen, aluminum, and carpet. And now we have plumbing and electrical in there preparing for the vault. The plumber has to take all the little medical office sinks out of those rooms. And the electrician is mapping all the electricity to help prepare for the vault going in. And in about two weeks, we're going to have the demolition done of all the walls between those offices, soon to be offices. So making progress.
Exciting.
Excellent.
Yeah. To be clear, we're not demolishing all the walls in all the offices. Just the one line. That it, as far as announcements? Warrants. Okay, we have check warrant 25030 for $47,652.16. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Okay. Items over 1,000. Semify for 1,359.
That's the cemetery records software, the yearly fee.
The yearly fee. Okay. And Hathaway Electric, 1,403.15.
That is, that was, I think it was Howard Parks Service, but DPW.
Yeah. Harrison Schrader Enterprises, 1,720.
I have two things here. Another Harrison Schrader.
It's invoice 249848.
It's called Harrison Schrader?
H S E. Harrison Schrader Enterprises.
I remember seeing it. I just can't find it on either. Oh, there it is. The extrication equipment, the fire department.
Right. The joys of life.
Yeah. It wasn't like something we always paid to this entity, so I was like, wait a minute, that's familiar, but it's not.
5,447.82 to Innovative Surface Solutions. That's for the roads.
Yep. Council.
1,216.30 to M&amp;T Bank.
That is the M&amp;T card, the town credit card, various purchases. Pretty much every department. Office supplies, postage, Zoom, MailChimp, all those things.
All the workings of Cole Hall.
Yes, yes.
RCS Consulting, 1,640.45.
Yep, the monthly fee.
For our computer system, our network. Nicholas Spur reimbursement, $125.
The DPW would reimburse them for their boots every year. A pair of boots per year. They go through them. Get them out.
Yes.
Yeah.
The VLCT, Vermont League of Cities and Towns, for 6,156.
Those are the yearly dues.
The Vermont State Treasurer for 22,880.
Woo-hoo. Loan payment for the tractor mower, and it is the second to last payment, so we are nearing the end.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great.
Don't even put a smiling face there.
This is great. Okay.
Light at the end of the tunnel.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have another one?
Yeah, we have payroll warrants. These are, the one with no signatures is this week, and the other ones are the odd weeks that you had to sign.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's one in there that we were, we're just getting our ducks in a row, and there was one that we found that we couldn't find the copy of, so.
Okay, so the first one is the one that none of us have signed.
Yeah.
Okay. This is check warrant report PR 26, payroll for, hmm, for $18,895.77.
So moved.
Thank you, Tony.
A second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's another one here that does not have...
Is that the February one?
This is from '24.
I don't know why I didn't send that. There are a couple that just need to be signed because we were going through our records and we couldn't find that one, so. I don't know if that's, I thought it was from February.
It's from last summer.
Oh, okay. Put that one aside, then, that was probably...
Yeah, I think that was just a mistake.
The other one isn't, though. Any other ones with the in-between when we had to buy?
The in-between weeks, when I have come in.
Yep.
And then there's one from February.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is check warrant report PR 17, payroll for 22,434.69.
So moved.
Thank you, Tony.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And these two that I signed because they had to go out, up these three, are payroll number 25 for $19,986.92.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then there was...
The February one?
No, I'm on the 5/21.
Okay.
Yep?
Yep.
Yep. The February 1.
You guys did sign that in February. We just can't find the signed copy, so we want to keep our records.
Yes, we, didn't we do that?
Where they need to be. Thank you.
Yes, it's coming back to you.
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So this one is check warrant report PRW 11 for $24,689.60.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's VEMR's and our tax payments, essentially.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, right? Okay.
Yeah, it was a lot, but we're ducks in a row.
Good.
Thank you.
Oh, public comments. No public making comments yet today. Okay. And there's nobody on Zoom?
Nobody.
Nobody, okay.
Thank you.
I think we have no treasurer's report today, right?
We have no treasurer's report.
No treasurer's report.
And the next time will be the month-end slash fiscal year-end report, which is more important.
Yes. Okay, the DPW report. I think we're going to actually, the DPW has been under the supervision of the Cemetery Superintendent, so perhaps she can give the DPW a report about what they're doing.
At least for the past little while week, I've had the DPW crew in the cemeteries, and we've worked through the, finished working through the historic section in Center Cemetery, and it looks wonderful. We fixed many stones, probably over 125 stones over there. And we went over to Grandview, starting last week, and then this week, and we'll probably finish Division 2 this week. We're open one, but I'm not positive. I'm just being very, very happy if we finish Division 2, because it really needed attention. Pretty much every stone was crooked, not straight, sunk, because all the stones date back to the late 1700s, early 1800s, and they're just, no foundations. So they sunk, crooked, they were just, so we're straightening them, we're putting in stone underneath, and it just looks gorgeous. So they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you to the DPW.
I have one more DPW thing.
Good.
And that we were notified this week that they've been awarded $49,000 grant for Culvert Project on Murkin Hill Road.
Great.
So, yeah.
Okay. And now we come to the Green Mountain Hometown Heroes, Shirley and Dee.
I'm Shirley Adams, this is Dee Colte. We put together the program for Green Mountain Hometown Heroes. You've probably seen banners in Bennington. We do have a presentation, and I know I said I sent it to you. I know then folks at home can see it also. So who we are, to start off, we're a collaboration of rider groups from the Bennington American Legion and the VFW, and we got together and thought hometown hero banners would be a nice addition to our communities. We, it says on our slide that we've applied for a 501(c)(3). Actually, we've been granted status, so we are for not-for-profit officially.
Congratulations.
Keep turning. Next. Yep, there we go. Our purpose, the objective of the Green Mountain Hometown Heroes is to honor our local veterans living and deceased by obtaining customized banners to be displayed on poles along town-managed streets. Dee can show you what one looks like.
This is a sample, but this is the actual size of the banner.
And they're fairly loving what it looks like. If you want to look at it.
The ones we have up in Bennington did really well through the winter. We thought if they were any bigger, they'd get, they'd get touched, and these, this side stood up really well.
How long will they stay up?
The company who's making them for us said they should last two to three years. Our agreement with the town of Bennington is that we kind of come up with a three-year time period, and then we review it after that. But in the meantime, and I'll probably get to this again later on in the presentation, if the banners become unserviceable because they fade, or for some reason they tear, you know, we would take them down. We don't want anything that doesn't look nice to be up there. It's not complimentary to our veterans, and it isn't a good impression for your town. If you turn the next one, I'll tell you who's eligible. So examples of our banners, okay. Veterans who are living or deceased, who were born or grew up or associated with the town of Shaftesbury. Service members who have been honorably discharged from any branch of the service. There we go. Applications can be available at our email address, which is there, and I can leave you some other information. Banners are paid for by sponsors and are the property of the sponsor. The cost of the banner for the sponsor is $190, and that includes the mounting brackets, the shipping charges, a small administrative fee. And what the town will need to do is coordinate with Green Mountain Power on what poles they can go on.
So we should probably backtrack. Our organization is not, we're not approved to install banners. The town actually has to install banners, so it would be a town employee, because we couldn't, we couldn't.
Remount power dictates that, probably for a liability reason. They don't want just Joe off the street fooling with their power poles.
And we do have a contact there, Kristin Fellick, and we can send you her contact information if the program is approved.
Our rules, our banners will be placed without reserved locations, so the town decides where they'll be hung. If you care to coordinate with families, that's wonderful, but we're not promising that. Yeah. It gets to be a lot of work. It really does. Banners will be tracked by street name, because we often, once they go up, people ask where they're at. So we try to make a little map once they're hung, so people can find them easily, and we'll provide that map to your town if people come to the city hall and ask about it.
And we also have a Facebook page, and we try to, we try to keep that updated. It's a lot of work.
Flip. Thank you. The banners are made of durable material, as you've seen, and should last a few years. Families will be contacted if a replacement is required, and if it is, they would take care of the payment for that. As I said earlier, if the banners are no longer presentable, an attempt will be made to return them to the family or the sponsor because they're the owner of the banner itself. And again, if they become unserviceable, we try to reach out to them for replacement. Neither Green Mountain Hometown Hero or the town of Shaftesbury is responsible for any lost or damaged banners. The banners will be placed at the discretion of the town. No additional embellishment or just decoration of the banners on the power poles is authorized.
And we do let families know they are able, if they don't want it on a town-maintained street, they can purchase one for their own property, if they would like to do that. And there is, we do have an application process.
In order to move forward, what we need from you is approval that you want the banner program in your town, and you need to do a little coordination with Green Mountain Power to determine which poles they can be displayed on. Do you have any questions for us? We have received, I think it was four Shaftesbury applications through the Bennington, and Bennington doesn't want to hang Shaftesbury residents or, you know, and that's understandable because, yeah. So they rejected them, but just to let you know that there were four applicants, so there is some interest here in Shaftesbury.
Yes. Actually, we know that there is interest in Shaftesbury.
Okay. Great.
We have heard.
At this time, we have 98 banners up in Bennington. We just had 40 installed in Reevesboro. We have some that have...
Seven, seven, I think, left just one up in Fallon.
And we have an additional order to be placed for about 25 more banners between those towns.
So how many, how much room do you have in Shaftesbury? Do you know?
We don't know. That don't know.
That would, that would be part of what you would find out from Green Mountain, because they're, they're very specific about where they can be hung, what roads they can be hung on, and what, and what poles.
So would we start, like, if we had, like, 10 people who went through the application process? Could we start with 10 and add more, six months down the road?
We could start with 10, and that's what we're doing right now. We have to have an order of at least 10.
No, I think it's eight.
Eight banners, or they'll charge us, and it's a charge eight. So this next order that we're placing is combined in our towns that we're approved in, but 10 would be fine.
And you keep track of the sponsor that owns the banner, so if something happens to the banner, so they contact you?
Yes.
If we have a citizen that complains to us and calls us, that municipal offices and says...
That will happen.
Oh, I know, I know. So when they, when they call us and say, oh, this banner's crooked, or this banner's damaged, so do we take, we don't take care of it? We contact you?
There's a tree limb in front of it. Yeah. If it's already hung, then we have no responsibility over that. It would be the town, because it's already up.
Right.
Families have to approve. We, we have an approval process. Not only do they fill out the application, but we have a confirmation email, so.
All the information on the banner is correct, the name is correct.
Has to be confirmed before a banner is ordered, so.
Right.
It's a, it takes a little bit of time.
So we do the ordering, and we can have them delivered to the town, but since yours would probably be a mixed order, we're, we're ordering for other towns also. We probably have them come to us, but then we deliver them to whoever you need them delivered to here in the town, and you put them up as you, as you can.
Mike, you have any questions?
No, I guess we could just publicize it through the website, I guess. He sent some people asked about this.
And I also have some cards that have information on them, if you want them.
Excellent.
And if you run out of them, you can email us, and we can get you, give you some more.
Okay.
Yeah, but it, and it directs people to our Facebook page and to our email address. We could probably leave you a copy of a paper application if you wanted it, or if you...
That's great, yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
Do you have one online, too?
We put it out on the Facebook page, but people seem to not have a good time downloading it, so frequently they end up emailing us, and we'll email them an electronic copy. It is on our Facebook page, but some people just aren't savvy enough to get it.
Okay.
And the instructions are very explicit about digital photos. They need to be emailed to us, and we let them know they can go to Staples to have, have it dropped onto a disk, or, and sometimes we'll get a paper application with a thumb drive attached to it, and that's okay, too. And this is a copy of the application and instruction.
Thank you. We leave them on cards, too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And our email address is really easy to remember. It's greenmountainhometownheroes@chattlesbury.com.
Great. Okay. Are we ready to...
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we accept the Hometown Heroes banners. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Can I also say, I, you talked about cleaning up the headstones and stuff. I was reading on your Facebook pages, I was trying to learn a little bit about Shaftesbury, and I saw that you're cleaning up veterans' headstones, and I just want to give you kudos for that.
Yes, for Sunday.
Yeah.
All right. And we're always available to attend the meeting or answer any questions that you may have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mike will be involved with that.
Yes. Oh, yes.
All right. Cemetery Committee reappointment of Margaret Wilson, Rosemary Lindsay, Betsy Haberfield, and Kathy Cardiff. They have all submitted requests to be reappointed.
Should we do it in one block, I think? Make a motion to reappoint those four names, Margaret Wilson, Rosemary Lindsay, Betsy Haberfield, and Kathy Cardiff, to the Cemetery Committee?
All right, thanks.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a Cemetery Committee interview, a new person for the Cemetery Committee, Abby Densero. Do you like to, like, pull up the chair?
Sure.
Hi.
Hello.
So tell us about your interest in the cemetery.
Oh, my interest in the Cemetery Committee, it goes way back. My parents did a lot of genealogy research. I've traveled to many a cemetery. I love cemeteries. Have they talked back to you? It's wonderful, it's peaceful, and I feel, my husband's a vet and my father's a vet, and I feel it's important to carry on a service, to take care of those that took care of us, and just to honor those that have been here before us by keeping the cemetery up and kept up and neat, and showing a respect for those that have gone before us.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you guys have any questions for?
No.
So beautifully put.
Yeah.
I'm still disappointed we can't picnic in a cemetery.
Tony, nobody's going to tell you to stop.
I know. Okay.
Talk to the superintendent.
Good. Thank you.
Although we hear that she has little cameras.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Only people who pass mustard.
And I know I'm not from Shaftesbury itself, but I've been a resident here now 20 years. I'm from Danby, Vermont. Very proud of that, White Danby marble, and, which has made many a headstone in military cemeteries. But I really enjoy it, and when I moved to Shaftesbury, I didn't even realize it until I went, dove a little deeper into what my parents had done. All my ancestors are actually from Shaftesbury.
Really?
A lot of them, yeah, it's Addison's way back in the late 1700s, so very excited.
Great, great. Okay, shall we...
Yes, I'll make a motion to appoint Abby Densero to the Cemetery Committee.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Emerald Ashburer Committee.
Here we go.
Cindy Morse, who would like to serve on this.
Bucks are great.
The bucks are great. So tell, tell us a little bit about your interest in this and what you feel you'll bring to it.
Well, I have to say, up until very recently, I didn't even know it was a committee in Shaftesbury, looking at Emerald Ash Forests. I know my tree at my house came down, the town, no, the town took it down because it was an ash. And in my conversation with Naomi, it was very clear that I have no science background. I'm an avid gardener, but not, you know, anything about trees in particular. But she suggested that community people were also, you know, a valued piece of the committee. And I have a long history of community work, both in Shaftesbury and all around towns, county. You know, I served on the BRCRC Committee for a long time, representing Shaftesbury. I've been on the Select Board, been on the Economic Development Committee, the Cemetery Committee, the Planning Commission, over time. And it's been a while since I have done anything active, so I thought it would be a fun thing to do, and it certainly is consistent with gardening interests. And the thing that surprised me is the proportion of our forests that are actually ash trees, which is really sobering. which is really sobering, and thinking about how you deal with a problem like this when it has such broad implications. You know, there was Chestnut Blank took out all the chestnuts many years ago, elm trees...
Elm's are gone.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so this is not new. I'd be curious to see if we've learned anything new about how you deal with this stuff. So, anyway, yeah, it could be fascinating.
Yeah, and I think, as Dave Mance III, our tree warden, said at town meeting, it's as much a, it's as much a social as a scientific problem that we're facing, a society at all, a communal, a community problem, and that's, that's what, we wanted somebody to represent those concerns on the committees.
Well, I'm sure everybody has, you know, lots of people have ash trees in their yards, you know, so not in the town right away, and what do you do? Do you treat them? I mean, does that work? And, you know, so there are delicate pieces here, because you also don't want to keep spreading the problem if you can avoid it, so, anyway, it's interesting, a challenge for sure.
Yeah, it's a real learning curve. Anybody have questions for Cindy?
No, but I will make a motion to appoint Cindy Morris to the Emerald Ashborer Committee.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, so I don't know when the first meeting is, or...
Ask her.
Arthur, you got one more member to approve at the next select board meeting?
Hopefully in July, right? You're gonna meet in July?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Probably should we have, should you or Paula conduct the first meeting to form the organization?
Yeah, sure. Sure, but maybe you all could tell us when you want it to hit?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you for coming in. Thank you to both of you. You're gonna be working so hard.
I know.
It's gonna be like the most active committee in town for that.
They're going.
Oh, my God.
Good.
And the saddest committee in town.
I doubt it. Sorry, was that very...
All the porches.
The porches.
There's so many of them.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, you guys are too young to remember the elms, their, the elms were gorgeous. They're all gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody, two young guys came in, I want to say last week or two weeks ago, they spoke to Marlene, and they purchased, I forget how many acres in Shasbury, and they are part of this group that has genetically modified, and that's not a nice word, chestnut trees that are...
Up on East Road.
Yeah, and they, they're so...
They seem to have thousands up there.
Yes.
It's really amazing.
And they'll be planting more, so when she said chestnut trees...
At the middle school, there is a plot...
Oh, cool.
That the Rotary donated, and they are putting the chestnuts in there, the chestnuts, yeah.
So maybe somewhere in a lab, they're taking ash trees and doing the same.
Oh, they are, they are. There's apparently one percent of ash trees are surviving, and I've heard this from a number, number of foresters.
Good.
So they're busy doing research, lab research, on what's specific to those one percents.
Good, that makes me...
And that's why we're not supposed to cut them down, except when they're dangerous.
Right, because what if they're...
Because one of them could be...
Yeah.
I had a huge elm tree in my yard that I thought was resistant because it was still there, you know, and then two years ago it died.
No. Oh, my goodness.
Couldn't put your arms around it.
The ones over at the big building, the new building, were that big, and you can see the bugs were crawling out of it, and I was like...
There was too much bark on the ground.
The bark, it looked like a bear had come up and, like, just scratched off the bark off.
I hadn't seen one that advanced.
Yeah, and now they're gone.
Yeah. Come to Maple Hill Road, there are a lot that advanced.
Really?
Yeah, just all lining it.
I've got a couple of my yard that are gone.
What?
I have a couple of my yard that have recently passed.
We have considered a proposal to institute a new town position, the Coordinator of Special Projects, and I thought...
I did, but I have an extra one, so you don't have to go to the...
No, it's right here, I got it, thank you. I was gonna read it out loud, oh, sorry. For us to consider once more before we vote on it, a special projects coordinator would be an individual appointed annually by the Select Board to support the Select Board in managing and tracking strategic projects that advance municipal goals, and to facilitate communication and joint planning between and among town committees and commissions. Activities and roles would include facilitating cross-departmental collaboration on current initiatives, and providing updates to the Select Board and Town Administrator, liaising with community organizations, government agencies, and consultants to advance project goals, researching grant possibilities relevant to current initiatives, assisting with the management of special projects that support the town's community development goals, including housing programs, neighborhood improvements, and local economic initiatives. The position would initially be provided with an annual stipend equivalent to that provided to Select Board members, and would work under the direction of the Select Board Chair and Vice Chair. You have any amendments you want to make to this?
I guess, just reading it, so this person would report directly to the Select Board Chair and Vice Chair, but is there any, I don't, I guess, we kind of have a Town Administrator that reports to the Select Board, you know, so, just want to make sure there isn't, like, a bifurcate, there aren't two, we want to make sure the Town Administrator and this person aren't working at cross purposes, basically, or, or that the Town Administrator, I mean, we have good communication right now, but, you know, for any, just want to make sure this runs smoothly into the future, it doesn't become, I wouldn't want to see this person not coordinating with the Town Administrator.
Right, that's a really good point. So supposing that we change it to, would work under the direction and in coordination with the Town Administrator and the Select Board Chair?
Yeah, and I think the chain, they should probably, like, technically report to the Town Administrator, who technically reports to the, you know, so there isn't any kind of confusion over who's reporting to who, just so things are clear, and there's a kind of a clear chain of command, I guess, if that makes sense.
You okay with that?
I'm all the projects. I know it has to coordinate.
Okay, so would work under the direction of the Town Administrator, and in coordination with the Select Board Chair and Vice Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, the idea is mainly for the person to do things that otherwise, that would fall under the rubric of the Select Board. But yes, under that, perfect, okay. Okay. Any further amendments?
Is it for me?
Okay.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept that position.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, passed three zero zero. Here's the language.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next we have to appoint somebody to that position, but that's not for tonight.
Right.
Okay, other business, which is not on the agenda.
Oops. Usually it's just like...
Yeah.
The sandwich switches out, I'm like, oh, I forgot it this time. We have a few things. When the Cemetery Committee Chair came with the rules and regulations, there were still amendments to be made to them, and the Select Board said, make them, and they'll sign it again, so these are, they, them.
There was just a bullet that was repeated, removed, and they reworded one line. That was all just changed.
Okay, so nothing substantive?
No.
No, that it needs to be signed and then put on the website.
Yeah. And copied and put in every cemetery.
Do we need to vote on this?
We might as well, I guess, I'll make a motion to, to sign these updated rules and regulations for the cemetery, the Shasbury Cemeteries.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had forwarded you in the Select Board packet, Sheriff Gully's contract.
Yeah.
So I, it's on me to sign it, and him to sign it, so I just wanted to...
And as I remember, we do vote on it, is that correct? Or do we just read it and approve it in a less formal manner?
I think we vote to approve.
I vote so, too.
I guess we might as well, yeah.
And we knew the changes in it, and they're accounted for in the budget, because I remember him telling me it would be, you know, eighty dollars an hour, which is more, so it is what it should be.
Okay, so could you...
How many hours do we have in front of us?
We have twenty-four hours, fifteen percent of the scope of service will occur during late afternoons, evening shifts, and weekends, as per the town of Shasbury's wishes with shenanigans. Yep.
And the total we're signing for is?
Oh, like, total for the year?
It's not estimated, it's just eighty dollars an hour.
Eighty dollars an hour.
For twenty-four hours.
I kind of remember the budget line amount, I apologize, that was the one that was...
Okay, I'll, a motion to accept this contract from the bed couchers.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
One more. Sullivan and Powers is coming to audit us. Yay! Like they do every year, at our invitation, and here are a couple of copies of it, and I can scan it, but you guys have to sign it. And there are only three lines, which is interesting, since there are review here tonight. They do the same scope of auditing every year, and we've done so many things that they're, in the process of doing so many things that they've asked us to do over the years.
Yeah.
So they just give us a, this is what we're coming to do, since we pay them to do it. They're not like a state auditor or anything, they're...
And it's basically the same, the same contract as it was last year.
Yes, the same one.
It's the results that can vary year to year.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Submoved. We accept Sullivan and Powers as our candidate.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How convenient that there's only three lines.
I know. How do you do this? Signature James going by so-and-so, town...
We got through it pretty, is that pretty quick, I can't...
It's pretty quick.
I've become very time blind lately. Hours go by, and soon realize it's...
Because I'm the liaison.
I barely make it.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, the review of action items. So, one thing is, I guess, Paula, you are gonna talk to Mike Inati when he gets back about the Hometown Heroes stuff.
He'll be back the day on deck.
Great.
Which is Monday, the, whatever Monday is.
The twenty-third?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. So here's the...
Twenty-third. Yeah, that'll be easy for them to do, they've got the caucus.
And Jen will put something on the website?
About the Hometown Heroes? Of course.
It'll be on an hour from now.
Probably, I don't know, tired. I don't think I'll sign all day.
What other action items do we have coming out of this meeting? Oh, you know, this is an other, not an action item.
An action item's come after...
This, yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah, I was saying you're backing up.
I'm going backwards. This is an other. Nobody was very keen on being the Select Board liaison to the Ashborer Committee. Do you remember that problem?
Oh.
And Zoe agreed to do it temporarily. I will suggest that I be. I'm willing to do that.
Okay, if it works.
Okay.
Okay.
I feel, yeah, it's set to go, is that okay with you?
Sure.
I didn't think anybody was gonna beat me to it, all right.
I have another business, but it's really an announcement that I forgot.
Oh.
That we're closed Thursday, because it's Juneteenth, another federal holiday, just...
Okay.
That's all, Cole Hall will be closed for Thursday, the Juneteenth.
Cole Hall will be closed for Juneteenth on Thursday.
It's already on the town calendar. Yeah, it's already on the calendar.
Any other action items?
Slipping, slipping hands. Thank you.
I don't...
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Submoved. Moved, we adjourned.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting adjourned.
All righty.
Gavel, gavel.
We should have a...